Melissa, uh, city clerk, if you can let me know when we're ready?
We are ready.
And, uh, city manager, are you ready?
Recording in progress.
Sorry.
No, no problem. Okay, good evening. I'd like to call the San Bruno City Council's special meeting of May the eighth. Uh, May, hello. June, uh, June the eighth, twenty twenty-one, five o'clock to order. Roll call, please.
Council member Hamilton?
Here.
Council member Mason? Um, she was here a moment ago, so I think she might be having some trouble. Council member Medina is coming in the room now. Council member Salazar?
Here.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Here.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Here. Thank you. Now we'll move on to item number three, public comments for items not on the agenda. Tonight is a study session in regard to the design of the Recreation and Aquatic Center. So if anyone in the public has something they'd like to speak on, uh, other than that, now would be the time to please raise your hand, and we would go ahead and call upon you. Okay, seeing no hands at this time, we will, we will move on to the study session item, and I would, uh, ask if the city clerk could, uh, uh, call that item to the public's attention.
Yes, item four A, adopt a resolution approving the design of the Recreation and Aquatic Center, authorizing the city manager to execute a construction contract with Lathrop Construction, Inc. for the project in an amount not to exceed forty-three million, thirty-one thousand dollars, approving a construction contingency of four million, six hundred and eighty-seven thousand, forty-six dollars, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Nino and Moore, Inc. to provide geotechnical engineering and materials testing and inspection professional services for the project in an amount not to exceed three hundred and ninety-six thousand, two hundred and sixty-two dollars, and approving a total project budget in the amount of fifty-nine million, nine hundred and eighty thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
Thank you very much, city clerk. Appreciate it. And, uh, now I'd like to turn it over to our city manager.
Good afternoon, members of the city council and members of the public. Javon Grogan, city manager. Uh, it is my pleasure to be with us, uh, with you this evening and to present this item, uh, support the discussions, and support the city council through the recommended actions tonight. I am joined here, uh, by Don Merkels, the architect for the project, and Anne Matola, the community services director, uh, who will oversee, uh, this beautiful facility once it's constructed. We also have representatives from the construction management firm that will be assisting, uh, with the construction of this building. Uh, and so we, we come here tonight, uh, as the council and, uh, the public knows, uh, after a, a long process that really began in twenty thirteen, where this city council created the San Bruno Community Foundation to manage seventy million dollars of restitution settlement from P G N E following the gas pipeline explosion that occurred in the Crestmore neighborhood in twenty-ten. In twenty fifteen, uh, two thousand and fifteen, uh, six years ago, the foundation launched a community listening campaign around the use of the seventy million dollars, uh, that was allocated, uh, to the foundation. And we, we know in twenty fifteen, uh, that process started, it was concluded in twenty sixteen, and in twenty seventeen, we started conceptual design on the facility that is, uh, before you for action tonight. And so, as a reminder, the actions that are before the city council are, uh, adopting a resolution to approve the design of the aquatic and recreation facility project, authorizing the city manager to execute a construction contract with Lathrop Construction for just over forty-three million dollars, also authorizing, uh, Nino and Moore to con- to conduct geotechnical testing and inspection services related to the project, and approving a project contingency for construction of four point six. Uh, and that, that brings us to a total project total of fifty-nine point nine million dollars, just under sixty million dollars, and, and we'll talk, uh, about frankly, all aspects of the, of the project in a little bit. So our agenda for tonight are, are really five items. Uh, we'll talk about the process and, uh, have a project overview. We'll give an update on permitting. Uh, we will then talk about the awarding of the bid, uh, next steps, project schedule, and then finally, the city council action. It's worth noting that, uh, we're, we will talk about the process for the construction, uh, document phase and the phase for permitting, uh, and, and, and bidding that we've been in. But the city council and the public, uh, will remember there, there were three phases that preceded that. Uh, there was conceptual documents, uh, a conceptual design of the facility. Then there was schematic design, design development, and then construction documents. And so a little bit of the process overview for this construction document phase. Uh, it began in February of twenty-twenty. Uh, there were four, uh, primary categories of, uh, meetings and, uh, boards and commissions that, uh, we interfaced with. The first one was the advisory committee, uh, that was made up of eight to ten city staffers and consultants, two members of the city council, uh, Mayor Rico Medina, um, council member, uh, Laura Davis, uh, and after she, uh, left the council, uh, she was replaced by council member Michael Salazar, two members of the planning commission, two members of the park and recreation commission, and two members of the, of the foundation, uh, uh, the community foundation board. Also attending many of these meetings was Leslie Hadamia, the executive director of the San Bruno Community Foundation. We provided periodic updates to the city council, the planning commission, the park and rec commission, and the community foundation. There were a whole host of internal steering committee meetings and technical meetings, uh, that, uh, involved fire department, police department, parking recreation department, public works department, building maintenance, I T, um, uh, and, and then our, uh, our, our building construction division. And so, on the screen before you is a list of sort of all of the advisory committee meetings, the city council updates, the park and rec commission updates, uh, and the community foundation updates that took place during this construction phase. Uh, was not listed as the, uh, the host of other internal steering committee dates and technical advisory, uh, committee meetings. So the aerial that you have before you is today. This is what our Recreation and Aquatic Center, uh, uh, that is in the middle of our city park, uh, looks like there's the existing recreation facility with the rotary pavilion in between, uh, the rec- the recreation building and the, uh, San Bruno pool. This is the future, this is tomorrow. This is our new aquatic and recreation facility and the reconfigured city parkway, uh, with additional parking, uh, a relocated pavilion, an indoor and an outdoor pool, uh, and a host of other elements that we will, uh, talk about. And so now if, uh, Don Merkels is our architect is in the room, Melissa, I'll, I'll turn the presentation over to her that will take the city council through a number of, uh, activities and programs that are, uh, that are within the building, uh, some, some images that will help orientate you to, uh, the building that you are approving for, uh, construction tonight. So, Don?
All right. Thank you, Javon. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Don Merkels, uh, group four principal, and super thrilled to be here tonight with you. Um, it's been a long road, but a road well worth it. Um, just to give you a quick overview of the project, these are the two floor plans. First floor is on the top, and I'll start up at the very top of the gymnasium. We have a full high school-sized gymnasium that's divisible to two cross courts.
Don, can I, I think you're, we're getting a little feedback from your microphone.
Okay. Um, let's see, is that any better?
No, it's same.
Same, okay. Um, let's see, I can call in or I can set up another microphone in just one minute. So sorry.
Um, while we're waiting, Mayor Medina, I don't know if it's just on mine, but it looks like someone's raising their hand.
Yes, and we're gonna let staff have their presentation as norm, and then we'll go to the public. We already have done public comment for items not on the agenda. Thank you.
Test?
There you go.
All right. Does that sound better? Excellent. All right, I see smiling faces, great. Um, continuing around from the gymnasium, we have three classrooms on the first floor that's supplemented by a conference room up on the second floor, which is then directly adjacent to a community hall. The community hall is the largest gathering space in the facility. It's divisible and is also adjacent to a catering kitchen. As we move over to the areas designated in green, um, we have an elevated walking track that goes around the top of the gym. We also have a group exercise room, um, for things like boot camps, yoga classes, line dancing, all sorts of things. And then the larger space up on the top left in green is our fitness area, where we have cardio and weights. Um, continuing back to the first floor in blue on the left side, we have their year-round aquatics with the natatorium that's supported by locker rooms as well as party rooms. And so we'll take you through the base project on the next slide. So this is a view of the center as you're coming in on city parkway, and looking at the second floor here with the transparency into the community hall, that is the large space with the catering kitchen. We have three classrooms on the first floor below that. Moving up city parkway, we have the entry trellis, which goes into this two-story lobby space. Then behind that, on the second floor, we have the group exercise room, all fronted by the public plaza. As you move up the park beyond that to the natatorium wing, there's stadium seating and steps that take you up as the grade changes and you move into the park. On the next slide, we're moving around, so we're looking back towards Crystal Spring with the building in front of us. It's almost the exact same location as the existing building. The creek is now behind us, and you can see the community hall and classroom wing, the lobby that has a two-story volume with the stair and an elevator that connects up to the second floor. We have the entry trellis that pulls people into the lobby, and behind that you can see the clear story windows, which provide daylighting into the gymnasium. The group exercise room is still on the second floor, and as look, you look beyond to the left on this rendering, you can see the natatorium and the outdoor grass area adjacent to that. On the next slide, we're up on the elevated grass area that's enclosed outside the natatorium, and the natatorium is inside the two-story space. It has a large door that opens up to allow indoor-outdoor connections. Then we have two party rooms directly adjacent to that that connect both to the indoors and the outdoors for revenue generation, for lifeguard training, things like that. And then also similar that you saw in the gymnasiums, we also have a shed roof that raises up and allows the clear stories to provide natural lighting into the natatorium. As we go to the next slide, uh, looking at the lobby space now, we have two images. The one on the left is as you enter to the lobby and look to the right, the two-story, um, space has the stair that takes you up to the community hall or directly in front of you is the classrooms. And then to the left of you here, you can see the transparency that connects the lobby to the gymnasium. And then if we were to turn a hundred and eighty degrees and look in the other direction, the image on the right shows us looking back at the reception desk. We can still see the gymnasium on the right. Two-story volume looks up and connects you to the group exercise room on the second floor. And if we look down the hallway, we can actually see the pool lobby beyond. And on the next slide, we've gone up a half a level, and we're at the pool lobby, and you can see the stair that would then take you up to the fitness room, the group X room, and the elevated walking running track that goes around the gymnasium, and also has the connection to the pool here. This is, provides you access at this lobby level to the locker rooms as well as family changing rooms. The image on the right shows you an indoor view of the natatorium with the view to, in the far corner there is the doors that connect to the outdoor space, and then the two party rooms are on the left. What you can't see in this image is the glazed wall that's up on the backside of us here on this left side and connects to the fitness room on the second floor, which I'll show you an image in just a minute. On the next slide, we've now gone into the gym. We're looking back towards the lobby. You can see the transparency that I was talking about with the glazing that connects us to the lobby, provides access indoors and out to the lobby from the gym. You can see the elevated walking track that goes around the perimeter. If you look into the middle of the gym, there is a curtain that comes down and divides the court into two half courts, two cross courts. And you can also see the transparency into the group X room that's directly in front of us, the fitness room over to the right, past the track that actually has then transparency into the natatorium as well. There is bleachers that support the full court or the half court that you can see here on the right as well. And the next slide, so now we're up on the second floor in the fitness room, looking down into the natatorium. You can see how we borrowed daylight from both the gymnasium as well as the natatorium and provided great views while working out from this space. The pool lobby is over on your left. And then on the next slide, this is an image of the group exercise room that's on the second floor, has views out towards the park over that public plaza as well as back down into the entry lobby. And then on the next slide, the community hall. Uh, this space is also divisible, and the view on the left is looking back towards the park. As we came in, I pointed out those corner windows. This is the community hall that is located there. It is, uh, sized for nice size events, seating from two fifty to three hundred, and then more for assembly. It's directly adjacent to a catering kitchen as well as for pre-function use. There is a conference room directly across the hall. Next slide. Um, so now, those were all things that were in the base project. So I'm gonna walk you through all of the items that were also bid alternates and are, um, I'll review those one at a time. We've got a summary slide here for you, but since I'm going through them, um, probably more efficient if we just go through them on the following slides. And we're gonna start with add alternate number one, which is the outdoor pool and deck. And so when we're looking at the image in the base, uh, project, there was an outdoor, uh, lawn area that supported the indoor natatorium and the party rooms. In this option, in this alternate, we've added another six lane for an outdoor pool, which complements the indoor six-lane pool. So the full facility would have twelve lanes as well as a splash pad that has zero entry. You can see how it kind of has an infinity edge to the pool. It's tacked into the hillside, so it really has kind of a low profile from the park side, but really creates this lovely vista from the pool side. And then the cross section that is at the top shows you how the pool, um, comes and is slightly elevated. Um, as we go down from the pool, we have the stadium seating that takes you down. We have the existing redwood tree that we're saving that's at the pool lobby entry down to the public plaza where there's an existing oak tree that we're also saving as part of the project to the entry trellis and the entry plaza there on the far right of that section. On the next slide, another of the alternates is the backup generator and its enclosure. It's located at the utility end of the parking lot, kind of right here up in the corner where we have our trash enclosure, kind of at the backside of the building tucked up into the hill here. It actually has a portion of it is a retaining wall. Um, in addition to the enclosure, uh, that's provided for sound attenuation, weather protection, is the emergency generator. The emergency generator, uh, the building already has one, and it would just provide a nice, um, backup opportunity if P G N E, if the power is outage, allow the facility used for ancillary uses in case of emergency, other than just, uh, when there's power available. Next slide. Uh, the topping slab, so this is actually a plan of the building. Uh, the darkest square in the middle is our gymnasium, and then you can see the pool, the natatorium on the left. The area that's covered here in pink is the topping slab, which is an add alternate. Um, we have sealed stained concrete as our floor material in these high-traffic areas. Uh, and it is with structural, structural elements, uh, that are part of that, like columns and brace frames. And so by having a topping slab over the top of it, we make it be a little bit more easily maintained, uh, more consistent service aesthetically, a little bit nicer, and a little bit better wearing surface. So as we look at the next alternate, um, this alternate is located in the natatorium, and we have three brace frames in the natatorium, and that's the image that we have on the left. And what we'd be doing with this alternate is accepted is add additional wood treatment at these brace frames, similar to the treatment that we're using in the lobby as well as the community hall. And I took a snippet, and you can see that rendering, um, in the middle of the brace frame in the community hall, and how the wood treatment just provides a screen in front of that. It also provides opportunity, um, for a little bit more sound attenuation as well. On the next slide is two alternates. So this is alternate number six, which is the extension of the glazing at the entry trellis, and alternate number seven, which is the soffit at the balcony that's on the community hall. Uh, both of these alternates are really about weather protection and envelope enclosure. So in the base bid for the glazing at the entry trellis, now this is the horizontal glazing that's, uh, part of the trellis to protect people as they're coming in and out of the building from raindrops or the foggy mist. Um, we have about five feet, that's part of the base project that's shown there in white. But the addition, the thought is to give a little bit more of a walk-off area, a little bit more of weather protection for people waiting for rides or people just congregating outside the door. Um, and so it's additional ten feet of glazing to provide weather protection at the entry. And then the soffit at the balcony is really more about envelope enclosure, weatherability, and ease of maintenance. And so this is, uh, enclosing the bottom of the balcony with the finished soffit material. And then the next alternate is exterior sun shades. And so looking at providing additional, uh, sun protection, heat gain, energy efficiency to the building, uh, we've looked at the northeast and the southeast elevations to provide, uh, exterior sun shades. And the elevations of the building, um, are shown here, both on the top elevation and elevation on the left. And then I've kind of circled the areas that these sun shades would be applied if this alternate is accepted, um, on the rendering perspective that you see here on the bottom right. And then the next alternate. So the next alternate is additional creek restoration. Um, with the realignment of city parkway and with the permitting requirements from the Regional Water Quality Control Board and the Corps of Engineers, uh, a good portion, what's called segment A, of that creek realignment is being restored, uh, to naturalized, uh, creek bed. In addition, the thought is, since we're improving this area, um, what would the cost be at this time to go ahead and improve that additional area that we're calling Creek Segment B? And so this alternate would extend the restoration of the creek to this additional area as indicated by these arrows here on the diagram. And then I believe that's the last of our alternates. And then the other thing on your agenda tonight for approval is for geotechnical material testing inspection services. And so, uh, these services, an RFP was issued in January, uh, five proposals received and marched, and based on the evaluation by the city, recommendation is to award that to, uh, Nino and... What's her last name? Um, I believe it's Nino. Um, and it's really work that's done during construction. So when the geotech's out there stabilizing the site, they do testing to confirm it's done. As steel is construct, or as steel is constructed, testing is also done as well as concrete testing. And so that's an ongoing service that happens throughout construction. And it's Nino and Moore, sorry about that. And I think that concludes my portion of the presentation, and I think I get to hand that over to, uh, Park and Rec Director Anne Matola.
Good evening. So I have a permitting update, and really, um, we are in the home stretch of obtaining our permits to proceed with the work on this project. If you have the next slide, please. So as you all know, the city's been working with the Army Corps of Engineers on our Nebruk clearance as they have jurisdiction over the creek as it constitutes waters of the U.S. The Corps scope of review includes the entire project, not just the creek location. And since the project includes demolition of a historic structure that's eligible for the National Register of Historic Places, and since the site is also located near documented archaeological sites, this process also included a section one oh six consultation. The section one oh six consultation, um, involves the State Historic Preservation Office, or SHPO, and they require a submittal of a Historic American Building Survey, or HABs, report that provides how the historic facility will be documented before it's demolished. An archaeological monitoring plan is also required by both the Corps, the Corps and SHPO due to the sense, the archaeological sensitivity of the area. And this process also required a tribal consultation to discuss the treatment of those archaeological areas. So as I mentioned, we're at the end of the consultation. We have everything, um, in agreement in a memorandum of agreement that is being circulated right now to SHPO into our tribal representative from the Mutsin Van de Costa Noa Indians, and we expect this process to be finalized, um, in the middle of July. Next, please. And so secondly, um, as you know, there's an add-on for adding an additional two hundred and thirty feet to the restoration of the creek, and we have that as a bid alternate. So the city is currently working with both the Regional Water Quality Control Board and the California Department of Fish and Wildlife to be prepared to update those two permits that we've already obtained on, in the event that we have those, um, bid alternates approved this evening as part of the contract. So, um, I think the good news about this is we had, um, permit processes with both these agencies, and so all this would take is an administrative process, um, which we could actually finalize by the end of the month. And so that is our update on permits.
Thank you, Director Matola. Okay, uh, and I'll take us through the remaining sections of our presentation tonight. Uh, and we'll, I'll begin with section three on the bid award. So, uh, we received six, uh, uh, construction bids, total price ranging from, uh, just over forty million to just over forty-six million. Uh, unfortunately, uh, in the final, uh, due diligence and, uh, review of all of the bids, the two lowest bidders, uh, their bid was determined to be, to not meet all of the pre, um, qualification conditions, uh, thus they cannot be considered. And so, uh, we are tonight recommending to award the contract to the, the third lowest bidder, Lathrop Construction. So the city is recommending that all of the add alternates be included, uh, in the contract award, given the favorable bid cost, uh, and we have a slide on that in a minute. So the total base bid is thirty-nine point nine million dollars. It's worth noting that, uh, one of the, uh, city council's, uh, criteria for this building, uh, when we, uh, completed the schematic design and were, uh, going into, uh, design development, was include the community room. Uh, it was a highly, um... It was a highly articulated benefit or attribute to the building during the listening campaign and that was initially not included in that first draft and the city council said include that. And so that is a part of the base bid for 39.9 million as well as all the other aspects that we went over tonight. And then there are the eight alternatives that our architect, Don Merkels, went through. Add alternate five was deleted. It was an exterior wood treatment that was determined not to be needed. But all of the other eight alternatives that Don went through, we are recommending to be included for a total construction bid award to later construction, $43,031,000. Total project budget is just under 60 million, $59.9 million. That includes first and foremost, the $50 million grant from the San Bruno Community Foundation. And the slide above has all of the various elements. Construction and construction contingency is one component, but there's all the other various components of building a building of this magnitude. And so there's our design and engineering costs of 6.4 million, environmental of 82 million, construction management from Griffin Structures, who has been along this journey with us for just over a year now, of 1.2 million. Geotechnical waterproofing and commissioning services of just under 500,000. Construction again at 43 million. A construction contingency of 4.6 million. There are total contingencies that are just over $5 million. That's shown on the subsequent slide. Laura Field parking lot project, the city council will remember that we advanced this project because there is a separation, a geographical separation in the park on where this project would occur. It is occurring near Tom Laura Fields to add additional parking and reconfiguring that parking area adjacent to Tom Laura Field, but will also serve this new building. The city council has already awarded that contract, but that is 1.1 million captured in the totality for this project. Traffic signal and city net fiber insulation of 850,000. The vast majority of that, about 750,000, is for a traffic, potentially a traffic signal at Oak and Crystal Springs. It's worth noting, and I know we've talked about this in our prior meetings, but when the traffic analysis was done at Oak and Crystal, the traffic count warrant actually meets a signalized intersection during the AMP peak now. This project makes that worse and so we are including the cost of a traffic signal in the project. It is possible that there may be some other treatments short of a traffic signal. A traffic circle has been talked about and that will be studied, but we are including the total cost in case we have to go with a traffic signal at that intersection. Temporary space for our recreation department, a part of the overall project budget at 375,000. The council and the community knows that we have already exited the recreation facility as well as the pool facility and are in those temporary locations. F and E fixtures, furnitures, and equipment of just over $1 million. Electronic systems, 25,000. Utility company connections and other services of 130,000. And then other fees and administrative and the business plan cost of 373,000. Brings us to the total of 59.9 million total project, including contingencies. It's worth pointing out that the total project estimate just before going out to bid for this project was 67.4 million. We did have a really good bidding environment, having six proposals and timing for going out to bid did leverage a very good bidding environment. And so the total project cost is 7.4 million less than the last time we were before you. And so that brings us to that 59.9 million. And so I know that when our bids came in, we were excited about that. So how do we propose to fund the project? What is before you is very similar to what you saw in September and in prior discussions around the potential budget for the facility. The most significant change is there's 7.5 million out of this budget and we were talking about the need to seek debt to pay over time for that additional 7 to 8 million that we were projecting. With the current budget, there's no longer the need to do that. So the total project cost, again, the base project plus the add-alternates is 59.9 million. There's an additional add alternate for solar that has not yet been bid of an estimated cost of 1.3 million. Currently, we have not identified funds to install the photovoltaic panels on top of the roof. However, all of the conduit and systems to install solar at a later date is included in the base project. And depending on how much solar we decide eventually to put in, we may put in solar panels in some of the parking lots to generate additional capacity to offset the energy costs of the building. We will continue to seek grant funds and other funding opportunities. There are government loans for solar, there are entities that will provide upfront costs for solar and you pay it over time on your energy savings. And so we will continue to identify a path for solar with the goal of adding it to the project, hopefully before construction is complete. With regard to funding sources, they are listed there, I will go through them. 50 million grant from the San Bruno Community Foundation. We will be before the foundation a week from today on June 15th for the final award of that grant. Parking Lou Fund, so the city council will remember our initial budget called for using the entire balance of our Parking Lou Fund at 3.1 million. This is now down to 1.7 in alignment with direct prior direction from the city council to retain funds so we can do other important projects across the city. And so that is leaving a balance of 1.4 in our Parking Lou Fund. Including, the next item is 4.5 million in a community benefit payment that we have already received from YouTube. The city council and members of the public will remember that we were able to negotiate a community benefit payment for YouTube's project that is currently under construction for two office towers and a subterranean parking structure at 1400 and 1450 Bay Hill. Those are those three cranes that are up right now building that facility. And that 4.5 million payment was paid, and I believe February of this year, but we do have those funds. The next two line items are additional PG&E settlement funds in two various categories. One of them is the settlement from ex parte disclosures. The city entered into a settlement with the City of San Carlos for ex parte disclosures that were found to have occurred between PG&E and the San Francisco Public Utilities Commission. Our portion of that settlement was 1 million and those are funds that have already been received. The next line item is 900,000 for residual funds from the Crestmore Neighborhood Rebuild Project. When we closed out that project nearly a year ago, there was 900,000 left in that project budget and we are recommending to apply those to this project. The next two items are water fund and our sewer fund, just under 600,000 for water and just under 500,000 for sewer, so 594,000 and 476,000 respectively. This is to replace the water and sewer lines that are currently within City Parkway. Because we are reconfiguring City Parkway as a part of this project, we are advancing a project that we would have ordinarily done to replace the water and sewer pipelines under that road. And so those are appropriately recommended to come from the water and sewer fund. There's gas tax and Measure A funding of 750,000. This is for the traffic signal that is recommended for Oak and Crystal Springs. Again, a funding source that we would ordinarily use for that type of improvement and again, needs a warrant for additional traffic mitigation measures based on the today number. I will say that that was, that traffic study was done pre-COVID-19 and it was AMP peak when all of the school traffic was around, which we know will come back. And the last item in the project budget is 50,000 for the city art fund. And the city council will remember you approved that funding already for relocation of our memorial art structure. In total in the budget, there's over 5 million of contingencies in various line items. And so when you take out the San Bruno Community Foundation grant, the city funds that we are using is 10 million and 5 million of that is contingency. And so the total project of 59 million is roughly 55 million in hard costs with additional contingency. And again, 1.9 million of that is coming from residual PG&E funds and settlement funds and 4.5 of that 10 million is coming from the YouTube community benefit. Next is our next steps and project schedule. So over these next two weeks, we do have a number of meetings. We met with the Recreation and Aquatic Center Advisory Committee last night. We were meeting here tonight with the city council. On Tuesday, we are at the San Bruno Community Foundation. And on June 16th, we are at the Park and Recreation Commission. And then really will move forward to enter into contract and finalize all the contracting documents and insurance during the month of July when we receive the permits. And then we anticipate issuing the notice to proceed and have a groundbreaking ceremony in August. So we are very close in this long journey to bring this amazing facility to the community with an estimated completion in early 2023. And that concludes our, actually no, there is one more slide. So construction management, I know that this is important for the city council and a reason why we brought on our construction manager so they can be with us as we were developing the construction documents, so they could really envision and know the project that we were designing and not just coming on board and reading plans and then inspecting and managing the project based on those plans. And so the task items for Griffin Structures are on the screen and you have them as cost and budget management, schedule management, document management, submittals, financial controls, change order management, review and approval of all of those change orders that will have to come to the city council. Communication to site neighbors and stakeholders and there will be a process for individuals in the community and the city council to contact our project manager if there are any concerns with regard to construction. Both weekly and monthly reports, owner, architect, and contractor, weekly meetings, OAC is the industry term, and special contractor and consultant meetings to make sure that everything stays on track. Progress reports to key stakeholders, including the city council. Coordination with our geotechnical testing and inspection services. Review of the progress payment and pay applications for all of the various labor unions that will be working on the site. Lean releases, quality control and quality assurance services, claim mitigation and avoidance, commissioning, startup, testing of equipment, training, OM manuals, warranties, all that stuff that we're going to need in perpetuity and then the closeout and punch list. And so Griffin Structures is here tonight and able to answer any questions that the city council may have. And lastly, the action that we have before the city council, this is the same slide that you saw before. There are five items. Design and recreation of the Aquatic and Recreation Center budget. Authorization of the city manager to execute the construction contract. Authorization to execute the contract for geotechnical testing and inspection. Approving the project contingency and approving the total project budget. This budget is also included in the city council's, in the proposed budget for fiscal year 21, 22, that will be formally adopted by the city council on June 22nd of this year. And so with that, I will conclude. Alternative actions, we can of course reject all bids and direct staff to re-advertise the project. This of course will delay the project and almost certainly result in higher costs. Or we can not award the construction contract and not move forward with the project. And so that concludes the staff presentation. We are here again to answer any questions. Thank you, city council. Thank you to our entire team, staff and consultants that have got us to this point and we're looking forward to opening day. Thank you.
Thank you, city manager. We'll allow you to get seated, maybe get some water and take a moment. So at this time, members of the public that wish to have comments, now would be the time to please raise your virtual hand and then we'll go ahead and call on you and then we're going to bring it back to the city council for questions on the presentation. I see we have a one speaker and so, city clerk, if you'd be so kind.
Yes, Paul Wapinski.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, Paul, whenever you're ready.
In the last couple of months, the cost of building materials and labor skyrocketed and I'm just wondering if this budget is even realistic now with the cost. I mean, it's got 11% contingency, but just lumber itself has gone up 300%. And what's the plan if we do go over the 59 million? Where does that money come from? Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Seeing no other speakers. So with that, we will bring it now and leave it with the city council. My public comment is concluded. We'll come back to the city council and if you could let me know if you have questions of the report, if you could raise the virtual hand or whatever and I'll, we'll start to call on folks. Vice Mayor Medina.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if we could, could staff answer that first question? Because that's a really good question. Are we going to take all questions or how are we going to do this?
Why don't you go ahead and include it in your question?
Okay.
And then we'll go with your questions if we can.
Excellent. My first question is for this project, it includes all the traffic control that's going to be in the site? Is the street, City Parkway going to be closed? What's the plan? If that can be shared at this time?
Sure. The details of that cannot be shared at this time. There will be a detailed construction schedule. Absolutely, there will be times where City Parkway is closed. When we have a kickoff meeting with the project and get into the detailed construction schedule, they absolutely know the thoroughfare is at the City Parkway and we intend to keep that open for as much as possible. And hopefully when we have to close, it closes intermittently.
And the traffic control is included in the contracted?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Looking at the schedule, we'll hear a detailed schedule, but it was provided, it's probably like the number one question that I've received is when is it going to start and when is it going to be ready? So I was wondering if we could hear a little bit about that? One of the slides did show, seems like a pretty aggressive schedule to get it done in 18 to 20 months, it looks like from that one slide?
Yeah. Construction has always been a 22-month construction schedule, but I'll have our architect, Don, address that I see pop on the.
Okay. The, our construction management includes the community notifications? Will there be a site website that people could kind of check in on? And for some of the larger construction projects, they generally put a camera up that people can kind of take a look at? Is that going to be something that we've thought about? The website and then kind of, that's probably the primary question of having the web, a dedicated website that people can kind of check in on how things are going?
So the answer to both of those is yes. And I think what you're referring to is the lovely time lapse cameras that everyone likes for these big construction projects. And yes, we are working to provide a time lapse camera. We are actually looking at doing that because we We are, we are actually looking at doing that because we have some tech, some people that are tech savvy. We are looking at running that in-house. We did receive a bid for, for doing that and decided to not use that outside bid, but do it in-house. And so we're still working out the details. But yes, there is the plan to have that hosted and have the time lapse camera.
Okay. For the water and sewer work that was identified in the summary, is this contractor overseeing that as the prime contractor or is that something for later?
It is included in the later up bid, and so they will be overseeing it. I honestly cannot tell you if that is going to be done by a sub or not right now. But I do know that it is included with their base project bid of thirty-nine million.
Excellent. Currently, we are being, the council's being asked to approve the entire project, which includes that generator, that backup generator. Maybe I, I'm not recalling the option for, for a solar backup. Is it, is it the solar? Is too much up in the air at this time? Or is it also that the energy requirement sizing of that to run the facility? Just interested in, in hearing, hearing about that again.
Absolutely, Vice Mayor Medina. Lots of meetings and analysis on that, and I am woefully unqualified. So I'm going to turn it over to our architect who led that phase of the project scoping.
All right. Audio's on? Yeah. So for the photovoltaics, and we did actually look at having a battery backup instead of the emergency generator. And unfortunately, right now, the batteries for the solar are not such that they are available or cost effective for us to use as a backup for our building. The building is definitely P V ready. And once photovoltaics are installed, it will definitely offset the energy usage. One of the things we're hoping that's going to happen in the future is that enclosure where the emergency generator is actually would be a great location to cite those batteries once they become available. That technology is evolving very quickly. And when we say quickly, so five to ten years out, they may be able to be replacing that emergency generator with battery backups. Is that your sufficient answer?
Right. I'm, it, I guess that is going to be the, that is the answer. And I'm hoping that we find some way to, to get that one point three million, whether it be from low interest loans or otherwise as, as we move forward. Those are my questions for now. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Hamilton.
So I have a question about bid alternate one, the outdoor pool and deck, which I'm absolutely in, in favor of as with the other, the other seven alternates. In the renderings for this, the fencing around it, it looks to, looks to be waist high, which obviously is not true for safety reasons. So is a, is a full height fence part of the included price? And I'm assuming yes, but the more important question is have the, like, what are the aesthetics of that fence? Because that, you know, it being at the front of the building could have a big impact on the overall aesthetics of the facility.
So, so, will you, will you answer that and talk about the hillside?
I would love to. And so if you have the PowerPoint available, council member, and you go to slide eighteen, you'll see that the height of the fence on the pool side is forty-two inches. And so that is height sufficient to keep people in safely. But because of that grade change that I talked about as you go up the site, from the park side, we actually have over six feet of height. And it actually gets taller as you go up. It's nicely landscaped. But it actually, how we've tucked it into the hill and really minimized the aesthetic of having a great big ugly six-foot fence as this kind of ugly barrier, we're using that hillside and tucking it in. And part of the retaining wall is then in front. And then our fence, six sets on top of the retaining wall. And we've been very carefully how we've detailed that. So there's no ledge or anything for anybody to climb up on as well. So I give a lot of credit to our amazing landscape architect to come up with this concept.
That's great. That's really, really great. The, the, the fence around our, our current pool is not pleasing at all. So the, that's a great alternative. Thank you. I'll, I'll probably have questions later, but I'm good for now, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, council member. Other questions from colleagues? I have not seen any other questions from council members on the staff report. Then let's see if there are comments from council. Oh, if, go ahead, anyone?
Mr. Mayor, the question from the public on the cost. And then one other question that I, I have is, does this include security cameras, alarms for the facility for this bid?
Security cameras and alarms surveillance is included, yes. We work closely with your police department to come up with the specifications and locations for all the security equipment. And actually, there is actually a satellite police officer's office located in the building as well.
And I think the second part would be circling back on the cost of materials that have increased.
So, so absolutely, the cost of materials have gone up since our bids, well, since we received the bids. We have touch base with the contractor and they are standing by their bid price and are excited about moving forward with the project. There is a contingency. And when you're building a building, absolutely, there will, there, there, there may be things. We do feel comfortable in the contingency in the project. If something happens and the, the cost escalates, we will, we will have to address that. That's, that's always a risk in, in construction. But we are moving forward. We do have valid bids. We know that there has been a change in commodity pricing. We've talked to the contractor about that and we feel that the contingency is sufficient to get through the project. And it's worth noting that our construction management firm is currently working on other community related projects in the area. And so it is navigating those issues absolutely.
Thank you. Now, since questions are concluded, comments from council. Council member Mason.
Yeah, I actually have questions. I just didn't get to my hand raising in time.
Okay.
So I'll just direct them as I go through them. The first one is, in the, we previously talked about the potential of making the pool wider. I think this is something I've brought up for at least a year and a half because we've had community members want a pool that's going to ensure that there's ability to have like, I guess, water polo competitions is one of the requests I've had from a number of residents, actually. And then I had another resident say that the size of the pool is not, you know, like your average pool for some kind of another tournament. Being, I'm not a swimmer myself, but being that I have brought it up to city manager multiple, multiple occasions and that we're being asked to approve the design tonight. What is the possibility of changing that in the future as we go through this?
Absolutely, council member Mason. You have mentioned that. And the design of the pool was a subject of much debate, much cost cutting and final decisions when we develop the construction documents. So what is currently designed in the pool is a year-round indoor six-lane pool with a mirror, nearly mirrored six-lane outdoor pool as well as a zero-deck pool outside that with a spray feature for, for, for young kids. And that zero-deck does about, is a part of the A D A access as well as child safety in the pool. The, the conversations around potentially making the pool larger are really too bold. It's one, going from six lanes outdoor to eight lanes outdoor, potentially for collegiate meets. And additionally, having additional depth for things like water polo tournaments. Should the city decide to do one or both of those, there is a process that we could do with a change order that will certainly have a cost implication. And we can do that after the award of the contract and have those conversations. I think connected to both of those conversations is a in-depth analysis and understanding on the business plan and operational model for the pool as well as competing uses for the pool and other costs. Because there's a cost of sort of adding more water and adding more depth. But then there are other costs to the project that escalate as you do change orders. So we can absolutely have that conversation. I think staff has done some initial analysis with the architect on that point to potentially expand the outdoor pool. I think council and the public will remember that there was a point in this project where we didn't think we would be able to afford an outdoor pool. And we made a number of strategic decisions to, to, to have a financially viable project. But, you know, we, we, we can absolutely, after this phase, continue to have those conversations about a potential change order. But it should really be informed on the potential users for that expansion, what revenue that would generate and what other users that may push out by having that expanded use. And so what, what the pool is currently designed for is not collegiate meets, which is really what you need, I understand you need those eight lanes for. But, you know, I could, I should actually pause right now because I'm getting past my depth of pool knowledge. And turn it over to our, our community services director for any closing comments on this. But just suffice to say, it's, it's not a forced all thing. We can continue to have those conversations as a change order.
And I would just echo that it does go hand in hand with the implementation and how we will balance the use of the facility, the pools against revenue models and the different revenue centers within the facility. So as we move forward, the decision will be concurrent with, I think, the business operations of that particular part of the facility.
Okay, great. Yeah, I just, I just wanted to be clear that it's not just coming up now out of nowhere. So I hope that this conversation has already started, which it sounds like it has. And I think it's something that we should consider because once it's built, it's going to be a lot harder to make those changes later and a lot more expensive as well. So do we, just so that, before I leave that topic, is that something that we would, when we vote on this, we would say this is something we want to ensure that is, continues to be considered? Or we just wait for some kind of a report back on that topic?
You know, I'd say it's already on staff's work program and we will schedule that, a study session with the city council about that at a later date. You know, I, I think probably in the August, September timeframe would be sufficient for that. And that's what we've talked about. So getting through the contractor board and the permitting with the facility as designed is actually really critical and important. And then talking about potential change orders subsequent to that.
Okay, okay. I say it because I, I believe it would be a very expensive change order. So I had a question about bleachers. How, how many people will be able to actually sit inside that indoor pool space?
Don, will you take that?
Yeah. So in the indoor pool space, we've actually have room for two tilt-up roll bleachers, which are three high. And they can fit over there next to the glazing that opens up out to the grass area or where the potential pool alternate could locate. Additionally, the party rooms are also used for viewing spaces for parents for swim lessons and things like that. And then also the pool lobby looks right into the natatorium as well. The concept, if there was pool, school, high school meets there, was that the roll-up door could open up and the teams could set up their camps out on the lawn area outside that roll-up deck. And so even if that outdoor pool didn't come along, the six lanes inside are set up with the timing equipment as well as the outdoor lanes as well for more like high school meets that had been discussed. And locations for where the team meets would set as well, so.
So that, the tilt-up roll bleachers, about how many people would that seat? I don't know.
That's okay. I think it's eighteen inches, six feet. Let me just do. Probably about thirty to forty on the bleachers and then additional deck space if needed. But for bleacher seating, that's what could be accommodated there on the inside.
Okay, great. Thank you. This question is probably for, I would say, the contractor? If the contractor is available?
Why don't we ask the, the question and then we'll see who's best or if it's Don or?
Okay, so I have a, a couple of questions. The first one is around the supplies. What is the plan to ensure that your supplies are cleaned every night? That we leave the area tidy? And how would you respond to any resident concerns that are raised?
I think that question is best for our construction manager, George. So Melissa, I don't see George Sannan in the room. Can you bring him in the room, please? He's, he's an attendee. Thank you. And if there is a representative from the construction firm, please feel free to raise your hand and come in the room.
And he's been brought in.
Yeah, I need.
Mr. Sannan, you're muted.
I thought I, I thought I unmuted myself. I apologize. Good evening.
Thank you.
I did, I did hear your question. So the answer is we strive to work with the contractor to keep the facility neat and tidy, basically. Not only the interior, but the exterior, which mostly affects all of the constituents and everyone pedestrians that pass by, as well as the streets. In all of the cases where we have materials such as concrete that would create additional debris on the streets and everything, we require that they sweep the street with mechanical sweepers. And we also literally wash the tires of the trucks that leave the facility to prevent any leftovers from concrete or other dust or sand, et cetera, to go into the, into the streets. We also wet continuously all of the soils. Especially, we have, as you know well, a very windy area. So we continuously wet the area so the dust is, is not flying all over the neighborhood.
Great, thank you. And what about any plan for residents who may express complaints about noise or about dirt or anything that comes of the construction? What's been your experience with that in the past and how have you handled it?
As the city manager mentioned earlier, we, we're actually building a nearby community center for the city of Burlingame. And we plan to do exactly the same thing, a replica of what we are doing for the city of Burlingame, which is basically having a helpline that is available to the public, not only via the city website, but also posted on the fences of the construction site. That helpline can be accessed by anyone, neighbors, anyone that has a concern, complaint or a question. And I regularly check those messages and answer them directly. Provide assurances that the constituents are being heard. And if it's anything that can be mitigated immediately, I immediately act upon it, whether it is by the general. whether it is by the general contractor or working along with the city if it's outside my jurisdiction.
Thank you. The next one is, and maybe the last one for you, Mr. Sannan, and it's around just the local hiring. Will there be any plan, if positions or subcontracting is available, to attempt at least to hire locally as much as possible?
Well, the contractor already submitted a very comprehensive list of contractors that are all union contractors. Within those, there would be some apprentice level, entry-level positions. And we'll coordinate with the contractor if they have the capability of bringing some local folks and train them or make them learn certain aspects of construction that they might be interested in. There's a large variety of fields where people can participate. We'll work with them.
That would be wonderful. Thank you. My next question is for, let me see, for our city manager. And that's around the, what are the city controls? It looks like from the staff report that the construction manager is going to handle quite a bit of the relationship with the contractor. And so I'm wondering, what is the city's role going to be? Where are the checks and balances on the construction manager as well as the contractor?
So there will be a city staff person assigned to oversee Griffin's structures and their contract, as well as there is the client department, the community services director. And so we have actually transitioned our management of this project many different times, depending on the phases. And as we enter the construction phase, this really becomes more of a public works project. Whereas before, when we were in design, it was really led by the client department. And so the structure contract is...
Okay, thank you. I apologize.
Griffin's structure's contract is with, it's held within our public works department and it will be our public works director that is chiefly responsible for that. At this moment, our interim public works director, Amon Ritchie, who's also our city engineer, will have oversight of the Griffin structures contract.
Okay, thank you. I'm curious to know why the contingency is eleven percent and not the, what I believe is a typical five to ten percent?
Sure. So that eleven percent is the construction contingency only. There's actually, in the sort of detailed cost model, there's contingencies in every line item. And so the overall remaining contingency is just over five million dollars. Roughly ten percent is where we want it to land initially, but realizing the additional risks with everything that's going on now with material pricing as well as just the the busyness of construction, we thought it was prudent to increase it to eleven. And there's honestly no magic and I think it's eleven point something. We wanted to make sure that we at least had a ten percent contingency. And then when we went through the final budget analysis, there were some additional funds that we, when you do the final math, it's eleven point four, I believe, percent.
Is there anything wrong with the city requesting a ten percent contingency? And then, and this is probably a question for our city attorney, but requesting a ten percent contingency and anything over ten percent has to come back to the council for approval?
It's important to note that any use of the contingency for construction has to come back to the city council. And so your financial appropriation is just that. It's appropriating the money to the project. But what you're authorizing the city manager to sign is a, is the contract for Griffin for forty-three thousand thirty-one, forty, forty-three million, thirty-one thousand dollars. And so any change order that may be needed over that is going to have to come to the city council for approval.
Okay, great. That's comforting. I did have a question, just as when I look at the current, the state of reopening. And I know that the contractor, I did go to your website and I, you know, I heard what you just said about Burlingame. I'm curious to know, though, given where we are with COVID, if you are up to date on your existing contracts to make sure that that doesn't then impact this contract that we have before us tonight?
So council member Mason, I do not believe that there is a representative from Lathrop Construction here tonight, but there is a representative from Griffin Structures, our construction manager, that is here tonight. And so George, I know you're working on a number of projects and you can talk about Burlingame. And so, George, can I toss that question to you?
Sure. Can I get that question repeated, please?
Yeah, so the question was regarding Lathrop Construction and whether, given where we are with COVID and that a lot is reopening, people are going back to work, are there any projects that you're behind on now that may impact this particular construction project start date?
No, as a matter of fact, we, as I mentioned earlier, are currently working on the community center for the city of Burlingame, which incidentally and appropriately is also being designed by Group Four Architects. That project is on schedule, as actually I can say, a little bit ahead of schedule in spite of all of the problems that have been created by the COVID outbreak. So I don't foresee any conditions that would impede the proper flow of construction once the notification to proceed is issued for that.
Okay. And the city manager, did you just say nobody's here from Lathrop?
George, can I name someone?
Actually, I believe we have someone raising their hand.
Within the public, if the city clerk can see that?
We're bringing them into the room.
I brought him. He brought in.
Okay. I guess my next question is just is a request that, similar to what we've had with COVID, given that, you know, there's a vested interest, I think, by everybody to have this project done on time and within budget. I would like to request a monthly progress report to the council. It doesn't have to be a long presentation. It could be a five to 10-minute presentation just stating that, you know, we are on track to finish on time, we're on budget to finish on time. If there's any, you know, hiccups that come up, that it be reported at that time and that the contractor, Lathrop, be available for any questions that may arise from the public. So a large contract for our city and I think it's really important that we're as transparent as possible about the progress of the project and that we are all accountable because all of this money that's being used is really, I think that we all have a responsibility to the public to ensure that it's being used appropriately and within our timeline set. Is that, any other questions on that from the city manager?
And before you answer, can you also see, explain how that's tying into what you saw in the PowerPoint presentation about weekly and monthly reports? Because that was in there and maybe that needs just to be clarified so we understand.
So absolutely, there are already been monthly reports to the city council. Council member Mason, what I believe I also hear you requesting is a standing item at one of our two regular city council meetings for a project update and also to have a representative from the construction firm present to answer questions on that item for any members of the public. I, you know, why don't I first allow the representative from the contractor to answer that question? But it isn't a typical request, it's something that was not included in the bid. Rick?
Okay, thank you. My name is Rick Martelaro. I'm president of Lathrop Construction. And thank you for having me. It's been interesting listening and as stated, we're very engaged and involved in the project. We have been for some time and looking forward to an approval. Council member Mason, we can be available. We interact quite frequently on a lot of our projects with community neighborhoods. We know that when we come in, we're making a lot of dirt and noise. We also appreciate the fact that the public in particular has supported this project. And so we're very sensitive to that. So as needed, in coordination with George and the city, we can be available. We like doing that. We like communicating well. We do sometimes build schools right in the middle of the homes and as a result of some of the tactics that we implement and trying to be good neighbors and recognizing that we're infringing on them for a couple of years, they actually turn out being friendly and watching the projects for us. And so, but it's earned. It's not something that is expected. And we try to keep them informed and we would be working closely with Griffin and the city in keeping them informed as what's going on. Because we know it's a very important project for you guys.
Okay, great. Thank you. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you guys.
I'm almost done. I guess just in regards to the contract. And I do believe this is maybe a city attorney question, but two questions. One is in regards to materials, if there's any theft of materials, just who the responsible party is. And then the second part of the question is in regards to any going over, going over the contracted time, what the punitive measures are on the contractor for every day that goes past the deadline.
City manager?
Sure. I'll talk to the punitive measures to the city attorney, Mark Saffarano. But I raised my hand because I just, I want to, I want to end this with appropriate expectations. And so there was a quest, there was a request from council member Mason to have the contractor present at one of our monthly city council meetings. And, you know, I've been doing this for a while and I know the cost to have people attend our council meetings. And so if I can, I just want to talk to the contractor because I don't want that to be in the final analysis, a change order for the cost to attend one council meeting a month and have the contractor sitting through our public comment for an item when they may or may not be asked a question. And so just respectfully, I understand the request, but let us work with the contractor, work with the project manager to identify an appropriate reporting structure to the city council or report out to the city council that does not involve additional costs or unnecessary additional costs to the project.
Yeah, and just to be clear, we're approving a contract essentially, right? And so that contract has been or is being negotiated. And I don't think that for a forty-three million dollar contract, there should be an extra cost to be present to report out to the public for a twenty-two month period. So I do want to just be very clear about that.
Absolutely. The contract template, though, was attached to the bid. And with these processes, anything that's additional typically comes with additional costs. I just don't want to leave this conversation with an expectation that that's going to occur when we haven't had those conversations on, will that be pro bono? Or will that be at an added cost and then we can make that value decision on what's the appropriate way to keep the city council informed?
City attorney?
So council member Mason, I don't have the, all of the contract documents immediately in front of me, so I can't answer that question right now. It's possible that the folks at Griffin might know the answer to that question, having looked through the contract perhaps more recently than I have, or they may have it up on their screen. If not, we can provide that answer for you at a later time.
Yes, go ahead, George.
We provide as part of our integrated services, monthly reports that are fully comprehensive, including cost estimates, the advance of the project. I worked with the contractor, with the superintendent and the project manager in creating those reports. They include photographs. They include all of the financial progress of the project. So, and they are distributed in a very timely way. So they are directed to whoever it's going to be. If it's the director of public works, who in turn will disseminate to all of you council members and anyone else that has stake on the project.
Mayor, it appears that John Hughes from Griffin has also raised his hand. He may have some information regarding the last question.
Mr. Hughes, did you want to add anything?
You're muted.
Yes, I just wanted to add, I wanted to answer council members, Medina, Mason's question. Currently, the contract calls for five thousand dollars per day of liquidated damages should the contractor fail to meet the schedule.
Okay, great. Thank you. That is what I was looking for. And then I think the last, just really the last question is around the communication from the city. What is the communication plan at this time for the surrounding community after tonight's meeting to notify them that a contract has been entered into? The timeline of construction and about this helpline that is being set up for any residents who have questions?
Sure. So to be clear, after tonight, we will not immediately enter into contract. We do have a deadline within June to enter into contract. We will meet that deadline. The action tonight is authorized by the city manager to do that. And then we have, again, the meeting with the foundation for the final approval of the fifty million dollar grant that will be next Tuesday. The communications to the neighborhood, there will absolutely be a mailing to the neighborhood prior to the start of construction. As the slide where we talked about the duties of Griffin Structure by our construction manager, their direct contact information will be there or a direct person for the city's construction manager as well as a representative from the construction firm. And then as we talked about within the scope of the work that Griffin will do, it will be that regular interface to address any concerns that may come up during construction from the city. They are the individuals that we're hiring to manage that and work directly with the contractor to resolve those issues as soon as they come up. So frankly, council doesn't get calls, right, when there's an issue with a construction contract? There will be signs posted at the job site. If there's an issue, contact this person. And the expectation certainly is that those will, the vast majority of them will be resolved and never reach the city council or the city manager, which is commonplace. And why we brought on Griffin Structures, Griffin Structures, that will be managing that contract to see that that occurs.
Great, thank you. And yeah, I think as far as just a comment, since we're going into comments, you know, the requests that I've made about these public reporting or the public reporting as a monthly request, it's not that it's, you know, to be heard before the council. I think if we wanted that, we could just have a private meeting. It's really that this is a project that the city is very excited about. And like many government agencies, there's always this feeling of we're going to, you know, it's going to take too long or it's going to be delayed. And I think it's really important that these conversations be had in public and that the contractor, the city, all of our consultants are all being held accountable. and that the contractor, the city, all of our consultants are all being held accountable together. Because at the end of the day, if we're not working together, this project's not gonna get done. Um, and I, I really wanna, uh, compliment Don, who has been kind of the face of this, um, since the beginning. I remember seeing you at some of the original meetings. Um, I think you've just done an excellent job facilitating these meetings, facilitating and coordinating a lot of different parties. Um, and, uh, I, I really look forward to continuing to hear about the project and seeing it move forward. Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Other, um, comments from council, uh, vice, uh, I apologize. Councilmember Salazar, sorry, Mr. Vice.
Thank you. So, uh, definitely a great project and a long time coming. Uh, we've been waiting a long time for this. And, um, my, my concern, I, I, I have concerns and they're mostly, uh, around the budget. I mean, this, this one project is, is bigger than our general fund. Um, and, um, a- and I know we, we've, we've had familiarity with the numbers and the numbers have, have gone up, they've come down. It's been like a roller coaster as, as we go through the process. And in the end, it's, um, it's come into something that's doable. Um, but, um, the, the one, uh, question I had, and I know at one time we had talked about when, when the, when the price tag was a lot bigger, we talked about, uh, issuing a bond to make up the difference. And where I'm looking at where the money's coming from right now and conversations that we've had as a council around protecting specific funds, um, I'm wondering if that's still an option, uh, for the city's contribution to, to this project. Um, a- and you know, specifically, I'm talking about, you know, we're, we're, we're taking money out of streets. We're taking it out of sewer. We're taking it out of water. I understand that those are components of this. But up, up until, you know, we decided we were pulling the trigger on this, there were projects that were counting on those dollars. Um, the, the entire, um, benefit from Bay Hill, um, is going into this. But there are, um, other projects out there that have been waiting for money, uh, you know, and I'm looking at things that are in our, in our capital plan. Uh, we have streetlights that are rusting away, uh, RO circuits that need to be addressed and no available funding for those. And so when, you know, we look at, uh, at building this wonderful project, I, I agree that we, we need to find money where, where it, um, where it can be. But I, I, I feel that it may be in some cases coming at the expense of other critical infrastructure needs. And so that, that's where, where I struggle, not with the project itself, but with where we're pulling funds from. And then hearing, um, hearing tonight, there are already discussions about change orders. Um, that, that is concerning to me because, um, you know, i- it's, it's already a hard pill to swallow, uh, that, you know, in, in these economic times, um, you know, we're, we're gonna expend these amount of funds, uh, but then that, that could potentially grow. That's, uh, definitely a concern to me. Um, you know, five to $10 million may seem small in comparison to the project. But during the last election cycle, I spent most of my time explaining to the public why the city had an $8 million shortfall. Uh, so it's, it's not completely insignificant to say that it's, it's, you know, it, it may be a bargain for this project, but it's not an insignificant amount of money, uh, that's coming out of other projects. And so I would, um, uh, suggest that we potentially still look at doing, uh, a bond to do this, that bond could be paid back, uh, still tied to the department, uh, funds coming from that department to pay it back, uh, and sort of keeping things isolated where they belong. Um, and, uh, and that, and that's pretty much it. I mean, I, I, I do intend to, to support the project in issuing the contract. I wanna see this move forward. Uh, I just wanna make sure that we're, uh, eyes wide open and not so, um, fascinated by this, uh, this amazing project, that we forget that we, we are responsible for a lot more than just this.
Okay, councilmember, um, city manager, did you have something you wanted to say or?
Sure, um, let me sort of, uh, step through a number of, uh, questions there. I know there were a number of statements that I, I, I wanna, I, I wanna address, but I think there were a number of questions there. Um, but first, uh, councilmember Salazar mentioned that, uh, this is the entire community benefit from YouTube. I just wanna clarify, I know that the council member knows this, but I wanna clarify for the members in the public. It is the community benefit payment, the 4.5 million from the current YouTube project that is under construction. That is not connected to the other YouTube campus expansion that we have been talking about, which is the Bay Hill specific plant. That has a separate community benefit package and that will be going before the so, the city, the, the, the city council later this year. And so that has a, um, more significant community benefit package that's, um, uh, attached to it. With regard to, um, utilizing, uh, other funds and, uh, the city's challenges, absolutely. Uh, the, the city of San Bruno, uh, uh, has had fiscal challenges, uh, for several decades. Uh, and the current facilities that we're replacing, uh, is, uh, were built in the 50s. Uh, and, and when we did the seismic analysis on the current recreation, uh, facility, uh, it was not salvageable and there are significant seismic issues, uh, with that facility. Uh, and so in the $60 million project budget, 50 million of that is coming from the community foundation. And so there, that leaves the, the $10 million from various city funds. Of that 10 billion, 5 million is contingency. And so with regard to the other question, which is, well, can we bond for that additional cost above, uh, the, the, the $50 million grant from the foundation? Uh, we can continue to look at that. Uh, what we know from the budget that is before you is as we come out of COVID-19, the ability for excess revenue to pay the debt service is not necessarily there. When we were looking at a potentially $8 million bond, uh, to cover a 68 million dollar project, we're potentially gonna have to look at using measure G, at least in the short term, to pay that annual debt service. And so should the city council want to, uh, direct staff to continue to look at bond financing, we can certainly do that. But given where our budget is today, paying in that debt service will either, I think, really mean one or two things in the short term, which is we, we either cut operations to have revenue to pay that debt service or we utilize measure G to pay that debt service in the short term. Um, with regard, uh, to the use of, 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 of other funds, certainly water and sewer, uh, have fund balances that can sustain the, the, uh, uh, the, the project, uh, budget that is, uh, aligned to those. We did have a question from councilmember, um, Medina, they, they came in just before the meeting on what are all of the fund balances, uh, of the funds that are in the project budget? I did just receive the answer to that. Uh, we can talk about that, um, uh, um, uh, and I can, I can pull that up if, if council would like to know all those fund balances. What I would say is the project budget that you have before you is also included in the proposed budget. So it's, it's included in all of the proposed CIP projects and the final fund balance al- allocations. Uh, because really the only thing that's changed about budget in the last six months is that it's four point, uh, 7.4 billion dollars less and we reduced the, uh, parking lieu money from 3 million down to 1.7. Uh, and so we are able to fund this project with the resources that we have, uh, uh, within our, uh, control right now, uh, with that receipt of the $50 million, uh, from the community foundation. And again, of the 10 million that's coming from city funds, 5 million of that is contingency. And so, um, those are the, the, the true city funds that are being brought to bear on replacing these, these two very, uh, aging facilities, uh, that, that, uh, we're here because of the community listening campaign to replace them.
Uh, councilmember Salazar?
Uh, thank you. And, and so just to continue, yeah, uh, it, it is true that there will be more money coming from the Bay Hill project. But, uh, what we know that, uh, has, has, has been committed, what we can actually, what's ours to spend right now is, uh, is this that we're looking at. So, um, you know, I've been bit before by, uh, trying to count my chickens before they all hatch. So, uh, the other, uh, the other thing, um, I wanted to also mention, uh, just in terms of the contingency costs. Um, I, I believe in response to councilmember Mason's question, it was stated that all, uh, contingency expenses come back to council. But unless I'm completely wrong, that has not been my experience. And almost every construction project that I've seen has used at least some portion of its contingency and it has never come back to the council for approval. I know change orders will come back to us and, and that's appropriate. But, um, I don't believe I've ever seen anything come back and ask us, uh, do we approve the contingency? Once it's approved, it normally gets used as needed. And when you're sticking shovels in the ground, you're always gonna uncover something and it's probably gonna get used. So to say, yeah, it's only, it's only 5 million, the 5 million is only contingency, um, I'm not gonna count on that not getting spent. And, um, you know, I, I, I think councilmember Mason made some really valid points around, um, what, what the optics are around this going forward. Uh, I was very much in favor of having the, um, the committee, the subcommittee that's existed. I've, I've only been on it now, uh, for this year and I think we had two meetings. And it really didn't meet the level of expectation that I had around what would be presented and what that group would be, um, involved in. And, uh, I know the design moved a little slower, but as we start getting into the construction and, and the dollars start getting spent, I, I really feel we need, um, the level of oversight. Um, and we're gonna be counting on our construction manager to, to bring us the reports. Uh, we saw the same thing happen with the Glenview, uh, restitution, uh, the rebuilt reconstruction project, uh, excuse me, the reconstruction project. Uh, we did get, um, regular updates, but even then, uh, we far exceeded the budget. There were a lot of change orders that came in. And in the end, I feel that we, we failed the neighborhood in providing everything that we had committed to. So, uh, I, uh, well, I don't wanna see that happen again, if we can at all help it. So those are my comments.
Thank you, councilmember. Um, and for myself, um, i- it's important to me too that there is that, that communication and that's why it's already placed in their weekly and monthly reports. So I don't wanna duplicate efforts. I just wanna have it, uh, so that it's, it's, uh, available to folks. So, you know, it could be, um, um, part of the packet or part of the agenda, so it's always online. So it is always available. I also, my expectation would be that, you know, we don't wanna wait a month to get news. We want any, any concerns that residents or neighbors have to be addressed quickly and, uh, expeditiously. And so, uh, it could be followed up as to, you know, kind of a, a highlight of what, wh- what questions have, have, have arisen, what concerns might they have? We could be updated on that too. But I do wanna see that something comes back. I don't know if it has to be, and, and city manager, I appreciate you saying, setting the expectation so that it's not, uh, I think automatic. But there are ways, I don't wanna duplicate. We're gonna get monthly and weekly reports or however it's being facilitated. I think that's what we need to know. What is the process going to be? Where is it going to be available? How will it be available? How can interested people who really have a love and a passion and it's in their backyard and it's gonna be for their community, where can they go? Make, let's make it simple. Let's make it easy. Let's make it user-friendly. Um, and, and I'm also with, uh, the councilmember Salazar in the sense of my understanding too is once we release the contract because of its completion, then we will see the change orders within the document, which, uh, comes back to council. Uh, there are some elements and that's where we'll start to see some of those things that have happened. Some are unforeseeable, right? You start to, um, you start to dig down and all of a sudden, wow, that wasn't listed, that wasn't there, there's no record of it. Um, God knows this city has, uh, has, uh, experienced that, uh, almost 11 years ago. So, um, anyway, I, I, you know, I, I am obviously in favor of the project and, and I think a community is, is, uh, impatient and been waiting. And I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop going so that we can try to get to the vice mayor, uh, the, um, city manager and then see if there's any action.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, uh, I wanted to thank staff and, and, and all of our, uh, consultants working on this, um, this project. Uh, it's a long time coming. It's as councilman Salazar said, this one project is bigger than our general fund. This project is bigger than anything that we've done, um, in many, many years. We rebuilt the neighborhood for 50 million or so, right? But this is one single project. Um, so I, I wanna speak in support of, of having a monthly update, um, something short. Uh, a standing, uh, it can be the first meeting of the month or it can be the last meeting of the month, doesn't matter. Um, this project is so important, um, that we, that we get an update and timely updates. And so monthly, I think is reasonable, you know, five minutes or less. If it needs to be more than that, then, then, um, then hopefully, uh, hopefully it won't, hopefully everything's gonna go smooth. But, um, in construction, there's always something that comes up. Um, one other thing, a- as I was hearing the other questions is for our, for Griffin doing the construction management, it would be, uh, great if they maintained the log of, of the complaints that they, or issues that they are dealing with. It'd be good to see what those are. It doesn't have to come, uh, preferable not to come to the council every single time there's an issue. But the log, uh, would be, uh, great if they were able to share that, uh, with staff and with the council to see what are the issues over there. Um, so I am in support of this. Um, as for the funding and potential bonding, I, I think that as we move forward, I think we're, we have, uh, a capable city manager that will be able to identify potential funds as they come, come about. And, uh, we'll be talking with the San Bruno Community Foundation here, approving their budget here. Um, if that's not tomorrow, I think, uh, from the agenda I received. I, but, um, and, and, uh, that, for the city manager, that it, that it could be an option of asking, um, the San Bruno Community Foundation to, to, to bring on additional funding if, if, if it's needed. Um, the 50 million was decided, that number was from, from eight years ago? Before we even had prices on this. So, um, I, I, I look forward to, uh, voting and approving this and, uh, and, uh, I think we're ready to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. I'm sorry, councilmember Hamilton?
No problem. So I'll, I'll, I'll be fast 'cause I know we're, I know we're, um, running out of time. Um, and, and because, just 'cause I didn't, uh, say any comments earlier, I am also very much in favor of this and look forward to voting to adopt this resolution tonight. Um, I am also in favor of, of, of regular updates. I, I, I do hear and have the same concerns about, um, you know, having, you know, paying to have staff, uh, or, or the, or re- representatives from the construction companies sit through our meetings. Um, but we can be creative with that. There's no, absolutely no reason that that one monthly update, you know, at one of our meetings can't be item number three right after the pledge. Um, to get right to it, get it, get it done, get it over with, and then we get into our regular business. We, we have all, we have flexibility in how we set up our meetings to mitigate that. So, um, I just wanted to, to share my, um, my support for the whole project and, and my, uh, support or report for the idea of having those regular updates.
Yeah, and I think just to, uh, thank you, councilmember. Uh, city manager's al- already said, please allow me the opportunity, he's heard all of us, I think in one way or another, uh, to talk, work, and then let us know. So I think he knows that, but I do wanna give him that opportunity that he already asked us. So again, they're getting reports as well. Let's not duplicate efforts. Let's streamline the process. Um, all right, councilmembers, I appreciate it. Staff, thank you. Um, and to all, uh, of our guests that are here that have been working with us on this, uh, to get to this phase. Um, councilmember Salazar, any after this or?
Go ahead. Yes, we, we have a, a, a resolution in front of us. I was, uh, I'm gonna make the motion to introduce the resolution if it's applicable.
Your mic go on, so that's why I said, let, go ahead, sir.
Okay. So with that then, I will introduce the resolution approving the design of the center, authorizing the city manager to execute the construction contract with Lathrop, approving a construction contingency of 4.6 million, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Nino and Moore for the geotechnical, uh, portion, and approving a total project budget not to exceed, uh, oh, I'm sorry, uh, let's see where it was, total project budget, um, of 59,900 uh oh, I'm sorry, uh let's see where it was, total project budget um of uh fifty-nine million nine hundred and eighty thousand two hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
Thank you for reading that for the record. Is there? Wow, all right. Uh, Mr. Vice Mayor, roll call, please. The city clerk.
Council member Hamilton?
Aye.
Council member Mason?
Aye.
Council member Salazar?
Aye.
Vice mayor Marty Medina?
Aye.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Thank you, council. Uh thank you, staff. Thank you to all the all the others, uh George, John, Don, um thank you all, uh Rick, for for being here. Um with that said, uh we are going to adjourn to the next regular city council meeting, um which I will see you in about uh several minutes.